Okay, I had a constituent call and they were asking a question regarding permitting for animals. And I guess this person was denied a permit based on an arrest that they had had, but I guess it was dismissed. And they were saying that they weren't advised in terms of what the process was if they could appeal once they were denied. So I just wanted to be able to give them an informed answer.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Madam President, Councilor Penney. I think what they may have been referring to is the adoption process for animals at the animal shelters. There's a cursory investigation that's done of applicants. And basically, they look for certain types of offenses that may involve cruelty to animals. If I could get with you after the meeting and get the specifics, I can look into it for you. But as far as like the permitting for animals themselves, when you get an animal license, there's no background investigation that really get into that. I think it's probably when they were trying to adopt an animal from the shelter.
He's actually a breeder. He's a breeder, and he wasn't able to get a permit for an additional animal or something.
Okay, I'll get with you after the meeting, if that's okay, or tomorrow. We'll get with the Hunter right away and take a look at it.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor Gerdinio and Councilor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, thank you, Ms. Montano, for being at a meeting that was called by the Monovista neighborhood. But it was actually more than the neighborhood. And it was about the parole office that situated right across the street from the elementary school, which has been inappropriate for the last sixteen years and continues to be. And I think there was a good frank discussion about it. I don't think we came out with any kind of resolution. I don't know what you think, Ms. Montano, but I would like to encourage the administration to continue the discussion. I certainly will at any other future meetings if the administration can be there through Ms. Montano or someone else, so that we can bring some kind of pressure, if you will, to the state to make sure that that happens. Because it's just been sort of a sore that's lasted. And to tell you the truth, I think the community's had it. And I don't know what can be done, or it's not under our jurisdiction. But I've said this before, and I was surprised that at the time, two years ago, two and a half years ago, I had asked that the building be inspected, and it was inspected, and it was found to be substandard, or at least some code were not being adhered to. Yet, we weren't able to move the closure of that building as an occupant-led facility. And we continue to have that problem. And I think at this point, we have a community that's really upset. And the only way to diffuse that is to make sure that we, as a city, and obviously the state, have that happen and close down that facility. And I really think that it's the job of the state administration to do that. It seems to me like it should be just an executive order to ask that that place be closed down. I don't know where the parolees would be able to be served, but that's in an appropriate place for them. And I just want to get your support for that. And again, thank you, Ms. Montano, for being there. And, Mr. Perry, I don't know if you have, I don't think there's an answer, but...
I appreciate the comments.
And I had a little question, if I may, or if I should.
Let's put Councilor Benton first, and then we'll connect you. Councilor Benton?
Why don't I tag along with what you just asked, and then you can go again. As the chair wishes. Provision of parole is also the issue at the downtown location, the Plaza Maya, First Street. And it begs the question, where is the appropriate place for these kind of facilities? Because obviously, they don't belong in our vibrant residential neighborhood. And they also don't belong in a downtown area that serves the youth and the arts and that we're trying to revitalize. So, you know, how can we really work together on this? And, Mr. Perry, you and I spoke about it briefly. I did speak to former Commissioner Brasher, who sits on the Board of Finance. So there didn't seem to be much understanding about where that one is headed either. But in a completely different way, it raises the same questions, I guess. When you look at the fact that we've got our warehouse five away, YDI down there, and that's kind of this little corridor that we're trying to improve for the arts.
Thank you, Councilor Benton. Councilor Gerdinio again?
Thank you. Hate to be doing this to you, Madam President, but another question I had was, Mr. Tur... It seems like I've received a lot of emails and questions, other concerns, about how the POC has been progressing or holding its meetings. And one of the concerns was that some folks have not been allowed to speak directly to others. I don't know where the First Amendment was thrown out, but we should look into that. And then even more specifically, why aren't we asking the IRO, the Independent Review Officer, to essentially respond to some of these concerns? And my understanding was that someone was told, some of it is hearsay maybe, but certainly a question that was asked, where does the IRO stand fit within the order chart? And my understanding was that the IRO responder is responsive to the POC. And apparently, there's been some confusion.
Mr. President, Councilor, I'm sorry. Madam President, Councilor Gerdinio. We did a memo, and it was public record. A number of people have requested it, a number of people from staff and the City Council requested it. There was a two-pronged question. What is the relationship between the IRO and POC? And our office looked at that, and looked at the ordinances, and looked at the regulations, and found that the IRO is co-equal with the POC. They work together. They're not, she is not subservient to the POC. She works together, and they try and have a good outcome. And the other portion of the memo we looked at is what would be a subcommittee, which really isn't relevant to this conversation, what a subcommittee of the POC would be looking at. And that would be at the direction of the chairperson of the POC.
Madam President, but I think the concern is that, just that first part of the memo that you, and I read it, by the way, and it does give the impression that the IRO, more than anything, answers to the mayor and the CIO. At least, that's what I read on that.
No, and, Mr. President, Madam President, Councilor Gerdinio, that's incorrect. She answers to both. She's independent, but she does not answer to the administration. That was specified in that memo. She is independent, and she acts independently. And that's what we want in the IRO.
Well, then, there's been some confusion. And the confusion that is, the information that's been relayed to some of the attendees of the POC meetings, where in fact, they've been told that the IRO does not respond to or does not work for the POC, when in fact, I think they work more with the POC than they do with, the IRO works with the POC. Does that correspond with the administration or the CIO, is I correct?
Madam President, Councilor Gerdinio, I have not had as much contact with the IRO as we have. An attorney, Mr. DuVoyce, who is assigned to the IRO and to answer questions and assigned to the POC. He handles both very capably. But in terms of answering questions, that would be, I don't direct the IRO. We help and we answer questions for both the POC, the subcommittee of the POC. We're willing to answer those questions, and we answer questions for the IRO. But I have no influence on the IRO. She is independent, and that's what she should be. And I don't know if Mr. Perry is having conversations with her. I don't know about that. If council's having conversations with her, I don't know about that either. We answer legal questions, and we try and assist both the POC and the IRO.
And, Madam President, and you're president for now, because you're serving the capacity, so...
Thank you, Councilor Gerdinio, I appreciate that.
And I would like to then pursue this, if not at this moment, then, based on that memo email that you sent through ICAhn. I don't know who sent it, I can't remember. Then we do get clear on how and who answers to whom, because I think there's some confusion. And there's some confusion, especially when there's a process of a CPC being heard, that there's some discussion cut off because I think there's some disinformation about why these CPCs can't be discussed, because they have an APOA, exam shop, and all kinds of things like that. And on a larger question, I would like to make sure that some things don't get bargained away in some of these labor disputes or whatever they are. Where we give away things that are just outside the realm of a management-labor relationship. Why we would say that officers or anyone cannot be identified is beyond me. Those are things that have nothing to do, I don't think, with our working contract. That's my opinion, but I would like to have that longer discussion. Sure. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilors. If you have other questions, that would conclude. The questions, Councilor Benton?
Sorry, tag team here. Just a quick question for the administration. Legislative session is coming up. Are we still in the same situation vis-à-vis the, I guess, the rail yards capital funding that was held up due to an audit of another matter?
Yes, sir. I stand corrected, and let me give it to Mr. Misania, who might have some updated information.
Councilor Benton, Mike Rieden is been corresponding with the Department of Finance up the...
Good evening, Mr. Rieden.
Madam President, Councilor Benton. We have resolved those issues, and we expect to have those grant agreements within the next month or two on the three outstanding grants that they were holding.
That's good to hear, just to not have that cloud over us as we enter the new session. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rieden. Thank you, councilors. Let's move on to the next agenda item, in which case I move approval of the December 2nd, 2013 Journal. There's a motion and a second. For the Journal, all those in favor say yes. Yes, opposed, motion carries. Councilors, are there any changes to the letter of introduction? It seems no changes, I move approval of the letter of introduction. There's a motion and a second to approve the letter of introduction. All those in favor say yes. Yes, opposed, motion carries. Councilor Benton, we have a report of committees.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Land Use Planning and Surveying Committee met on Wednesday, December 11th, and reports out the following item, one deferral.
Thank you, Councilor Gerdinio. You've been covered.
Thank you. Yes, Madam Vice President, I move that we defer R. 256. That's the bill amending R. 674, class review for Albuquerque Public Schools to facilitate the collection of school facilities fees until January 2nd. And I'll explain whether or not the other APS bill...
Madam Vice President, January 6th?
Oh, January 6th, I'm sorry. That's right. Monday, January 6th. So we'll still hear the other bill tonight. And I move a force substitute on that, but there's been some progress. So we defer that bill and this one after we appear later on.
Thank you. Councilor Benton, is a motion to defer R. 256? All those in favor, try to vote on that? All those in favor? Yes? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item is general public comments. We have several speaking this evening, so as a reminder, you each have two minutes. The light on the podium will turn green, will be green when you start speaking. It will be green for the first minute and a half, and then turn yellow, indicating that you have thirty seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. At two minutes, it will turn red and green to indicate your time is up. Please be aware of other people's times and follow the rules. And I believe our first speaker this evening is Joe Green, followed by Jennifer Bunce and Steve Mathias. Good evening, Mr. Green. Good to see you here this evening.
Madam Vice President, Council members, good evening. Thank God for baseball. The greatest Santa Claus ever lived in the Duke City for twenty-one years. He requested that IBS Rudolph Santa's help. Santa's name, Pat McKernan, former president and general manager of the Albuquerque Deuce. In many ways, Pat McKernan was the most generous person I ever met. Incidentally, on July 10th, 2000, Santa Claus predicted a miracle would happen when the Deuce once played and people continued to pray. And on May 5th, 2011, the miracle happened at Isotope's Park, exactly as Santa predicted. Santa had Christmas parties for disadvantaged children, gifts for children at hospitals. On one occasion, calls were delayed from Channel 7. Santa had Christmas in July during ballgames, gifts for children, and blue moon ideas around the sports stadium. Santa fed the homeless, summer veterans, year-round. Santa Claus helped the less fortunate, forbidding anyone to reveal the source. Santa Claus advocated to be thankful every day of the year, at the spirit of Christmas, all the time, to build the Duke City as a role model city of America. And you know, furthermore, the Pearl Harbor survivors are the ones that got me involved with Pat McKernan back in 1979. And we're going to be dubbed a man, you know, at another meeting, that really is a Duke fan. He's on set aboard, Mr. Isaac Bennett, the first honorary member elected official. We're going to make it the next meeting, okay? So anyway, as old Santa would say, you know, "Merry Christmas, everybody, merry Christmas." Good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Bunce, followed by Steve Mathias, and then Mike Gomez. Good evening, Ms. Bunce.
Good evening, Madam Vice President and councilors. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Jennifer Bunce. I'm president of the Duke City Wheelman Association. We are a safe cycling advocacy organization here in Albuquerque. And I would especially like to introduce myself to the new councilors. Diane Gibson is my counselor from District 7, and also, Councilor Penney, we're happy to see new faces on the City Council. When I was here last time, we were here to speak about the Paseo and I-25 reconstruction project. And we have some follow-up information that will be given to you by some subsequent cycling presenters tonight. I wanted to address one of the points I made at the last meeting, was that I felt like Albuquerque really needed to step up and have a better leadership position on diversifying and enhancing our transportation throughout the city. As we heard earlier in that economic development discussion, the Rio Metro Regional Transit Division is interested in this too. They're interested in the bus rapid transit, in addition to the rail runner and augmented automobile traffic. And what I'm here to say is that bicycles and pedestrians need to be added to that equation in a real, bold, vibrant way, not as a secondary afterthought. And one of the problems that we feel strongly about with this Paseo project is that it is not just second, but way down the list, afterthought. And things are not being done with any kind of safety or efficiency as the guide, which is what we really need here in Albuquerque to improve our transit for everybody, right? The things that make bicyclists safer make motor vehicle drivers safer too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias. Councilor Benton?
Thank you. Mr. Mathias, I attended a meeting on Friday, and so I thought I would give a brief microceptions of the meeting. And I agree that assurances were made that nothing is set in stone yet. But I also share your, I share your doubt that we're going to be able to move back the original plan. The meeting was enlightening to me, however, because what I saw was that, and I asked a question, a specific question about this, the existing trail that's in alignment with the old, previous proposed alignment of the bridge across not only I-25 and the frontage roads, is there, and I don't recall the name of it, you may. The one that runs behind Target and National Furniture. And, but apparently, the property owners on each side of the highway very much were involved in this decision, and it had to do with their visibility from the highway. So it kind of made me wonder, well, what about the sale projects itself? You know, what does that obstruct from the highway? And what is really the right of a business that's along the highway to be viewed from cars who really should have their eyes on the road anyway? So that was, you know, one of the things that really jumped out at me, that the interests of the private property owners on each side of the highway were very much taken into consideration. And if we were building a major highway project, we accept the fact that sometimes a public purpose supersedes a private, a public transportation purpose supersedes a private interest, especially when it's that as sporadic as to whether, how much can you really see of a business from a highway? How much are you likely to go visit that business just because you passed by it on the highway? So those are things that jumped out at me, and I agree, Mr. Mathias. What came out of it was sort of, let's still keep working together to plan this project and make it better. And I certainly share that interest, and I hope we can make it a lot better.
Me too.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias. Thank you, Councilor Benton. Next speaker is Mike Gomez, and Casey Padilla, and Stephen Griege. Good evening, Mr. Gomez.
The Martin Luther King Task Force for Social Justice came here at a class meeting and asked for you to put the recommendations for the chief on the agenda of this meeting, but you didn't do it. So is that because you don't have any respect for the citizens' opinions? Or you're not going to listen or want to listen to anybody else but the ones who pulls the strings? I mean, maybe you can give somebody an answer on that here soon. And the cops, the APD, they should reject the 1% raise. It's an insult, and it's a slap in their face. Why don't you give them all a 22% pay hike like Mr. Roth Perry here?
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Perry has it good.
This is not a performance. Please keep your applause down, and let's let everybody speak. Go ahead, Mr. Gomez.
I said, Mr. Perry has it good. Channel 7 does all his work, all his investigations. APD lawsuits under Mayor Berry reached 26 million, and a lot more coming up. A bummer for Albuquerque taxpayers. Mayor Berry owns this. Berry owns the lack of morale for APD, the Department of Justice investigation, the exit of all the senior APD officers. City Council says the city has to get more money for the APD payout fund. Oh, and that's it? Just write the checks? No questions asked? No inquiries into what and why has happened at APD? The council could at least demand that Mayor Berry appear in front of them so they can express their outrage at the millions of lost dollars under his watch. Then again, the council, maybe the council isn't so outraged. I think the citizens should be outraged because their taxes will go up, their roads and parks will not be taken care of.
Thank you. Councilor Gerdinio?
Yes. May I respond and also ask...
Hello, Mr. Perry, how are you?
Again, I'm very sorry for your loss. But I wanted to make sure that, certainly I, and I don't think there was any intent on the part of any of the councilors to not put the Martin Luther King suggestions, very well presented by Mr. Joe Hall, on the agenda. It was a situation where we didn't get it in time. We do have a scheduling situation, but I guarantee, and I promise you, that it will be on the January 6th agenda, and we will vote on it. But I very much support the presentation. I think it was well received by the council, and I apologize for not having brought it forward today. But I do, as I say, promise for January 6th.
All right, well, thank you. I appreciate it. MLK appreciated it too.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Thank you, Councilor Gerdinio. Casey Padilla, Stephen Griege, and Deb Renaldi.
Madam President, City Councilor, my name is Casey Padilla. I represent the City of Albuquerque Blue Collar Workers and the City of Albuquerque Transit Department. You recall, we were here a few weeks ago, I mean, as the employees, we'd had a lot of concerns with the way this administration's being run. It's been an all-out war on the employees. The morale of the employees is at an all-time low. I mean, the harassment there is pretty much unbearable for a lot of these employees to continue, you know, with the city jobs that, you know, that they've worked hard to get, they've worked hard to keep. We've got a pay cut a year and a half ago, no, three and a half years ago, we received a pay cut of 1.7%. Our medical benefits also, we lost another 3%. The employees weren't happy, you know, but looking around the nation, hey, we understood, you know, everybody was taking kind of a little bit of a hit throughout the nation. We said, okay, fine, that's all right, you know? But, you know, three and a half, four years later, where are we at? Same place. The City Council has appropriated the 1%, the next few years after that, we've yet to receive that. You know, we've been in negotiations with the city, and we've been able to get anywhere with them. I mean, without binding arbitration, the city is not willing, wanting to voluntarily go to that process. I mean, it's there for a reason. I mean, I think the administration should be able to look at that and say, hey, look, this volunteer, we can't come to an agreement. These employees, they're worth something. But the way we come to work, it's like we're working here, working for this city. You know, I love my job. I pick up trash for this great city of Albuquerque, and I love the job I do. These employees also, parks and recreation, bus drivers, we're out here, we're the frontline for this city. We're the first ones that they see. It's not just these guys, the administration office. You know, it's these employees that do the hard work out there. We just, we would like to ask for your help, and we need your help to move forward, to get this city back to where it was before this administration came in. Thank you.
I'm going to ask you again, please don't applaud, because we love to hear everybody speak, but let's hold it down. Next speaker is Stephen Griege, followed by Deb Renaldi and Don Schrader.
Madam Vice President, councilors, my speech isn't that much different than the president's. I sit on the executive board for the local, and I have the honor to go around and represent employees in various departments, and morale is shot all over the entire city. I hear it everywhere I go. You know, where's our contract? Where's our contract? We're here tonight to ask that the ordinance get changed. I think it's time. I have nothing else to say.
Thank you, sir. Deb Renaldi, followed by Don Schrader, Tracy Daniel, and then Tracy Daniel. Good evening.
My name's Deb Renaldi. I'm the president of the Clerical Union for the City of Albuquerque. We have gone four years at impasse. We've gone four years with no raise. The morale, like they said, is at an all-time low. We feel that the city does not value their employees. Well, some of their employees. One employee, they value a lot. We would really appreciate if you would help us get arbitration. I think it's the only way that we can go forward. Thank you very much.
Yes, Councilor Gerdinio.
Ms. Renaldi?
Yes.
I'm confused. I was under the impression that the contract negotiations were going along, and that we had a contract that you were working under, and that all that was missing was binding arbitration. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, we have not settled our agreement. We have not had a contract in four years. We're at an impasse. And the only way to break that impasse is to go to arbitration. But the city refuses to go to arbitration. We're willing to put up our best offer, and we're willing to be reasonable. But I feel like the city doesn't want to be reasonable, and that's why they don't want to go to arbitration.
So if we had an ordinance or a charter change that asks for binding arbitration, that would be the help that you would be?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Renaldi. And I wish I could tell you that could happen tomorrow, but I certainly will be working on what can happen, you know, in that vein.
Thank you, Councilor Gerdinio. Councilor, Mr. Perry... Councilor, Mr. Perry, may I ask a question first? What is, what does the city consider the status of the negotiations to be? Maybe I'll go to my question.
Madam President, as it relates, of course, to seven unions, but as it relates to the ASME unions themselves, one of the ASME unions we do have a contract with, which is the M Series. That involved a salary increase, a concession that took a bucket for the union time issue and some other give and take. As it relates to the blue collar and clerical, I didn't know we were at an impasse. That's interesting to hear. I'm really glad to hear that. Because the reason why I say that, and perhaps the union doesn't know that either, is that we've had four sessions and out of those four sessions that we're inviting the blue collar union, in that case, to come to the table for negotiations, out of those four sessions, they appeared at one, the last two, they have not appeared at. And I would think that it's important to come to those sessions and to take the process down as it should go and to reach a point where there is an impasse or there isn't an impasse. But there just hasn't been an appearance. The last time, I believe, it related to an issue, and I think it was last week, where the negotiator for the city was advised in the 11th hour that there was a health issue with one of the folks, so no one came. Prior to that, there was no call. They just didn't show up. And I don't think the membership knows that. So what I would do is propose that we allow the membership to know what the efforts have been by the city. I think they hear one side to try to come together to negotiate a disposition. We know it's been appropriated and we know what the issues are, but unfortunately, we hear there's, we're at an impasse. Well, that's kind of contrary to what letters we've received are, which is, we want to open negotiations. So there seems to be a conflict in the messages we're receiving.
Mr. Perry. Thank you. Councilor Gibson and then Councilor Pena.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for you, Mr. Perry. The question I have for you is, the impasse, when do you think, when was the last time there was a meaningful negotiation with ASME?
I believe there was an exchange of proposals in one of the four meetings that occurred probably over the course of the last couple of months. But as far as, I think you were going to ask me, when do I believe an impasse occurs? And typically, within the process, one side will declare an impasse. Now, there's reasons why you would do that and reasons why you wouldn't. In this case, it's probably been complicated by a legal decision that has come up, that has basically determined and held that the prior contracts were expired. It also, within the holdings, spells out what the impasse procedures are of the city and ultimately what the city may be able to do when the contract has expired and there is an impasse. And I think those are options, quite frankly, that the union's executive committee and leadership don't particularly see as favorable to them. So it may be a situation where it's not advantageous to declare an impasse. I can't speculate on what the rationale and logic is of the unions, but it's not a good situation when that's the case.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. It sounds like there is a legal or administrative definition of impasse, but the last contract expired how many years ago? Five years ago? Four years ago?
It would be important to note that the contract itself expired probably, I want to say, 2011, might have been FY '12, but that the unions had proceeded to court claiming that what we'd like to do is evergreen these contracts. And the district court ruled in the favor that the evergreen provisions continue a contract in place while there's a, quote, impasse. The Court of Appeals reversed that holding. So through the judicial process, about a year and a half, two years went by until that particular judicial clarification. And it was a case of first impression in New Mexico as well. So there wasn't a lot of precedent for the union or the administration to make a determination what the status of those contracts were after the specific terms of them had expressly expired within the contract.
So are you saying that you were waiting for a court decision before you, before both sides went back to the table to negotiate?
No, we actually attempted negotiation because council provided appropriation each and every year. In fact, if we were able to go to negotiations and reach a negotiation within the appropriation of council, there would be basically a 3% already in place. In the first year, it affected employees less than $50,000. In subsequent years, it was qualified. It wasn't limited to that. So, you know, we continue to negotiate within those parameters.
So, okay, I'm sorry, I'm missing something.
Yes, ma'am.
It was appropriated, the 1% raises were appropriated. Why were they not acted upon or were they not implemented?
I think that you'll have to ask the other side to that equation. I mean, it's fairly simple in the negotiation process for the city because the other side, the union, knows what has been appropriated. It's not a secret like a corporation might have to say, well, there's so much profits and you won't let us know what they are. There's an appropriation and we can't negotiate more than what the appropriation was, basically. When you ask me why they weren't acted upon, there may have been other considerations that were requested by the city, maybe the union time issue, that they said, well, we don't want to give up union time for a 1% appropriated raise. That's what I suspect it was, quite frankly. That seemed to be the largest sticking point. Now, that may be the case and that's certainly within the purview of the collective bargaining unit, but at the same time, the membership of the collective bargaining unit never gets to take a vote on that. So theoretically, you have this proposal that would have 1% raise the last two years coming into a third year now, and the membership has never been able to take a vote on that. It's never been submitted, from what I understand.
Ladies and gentlemen, please. Thank you, Councilor Gibson.
We've never reached a tentative agreement that would spark a ratification vote.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Councilor Pena?
So all this discussion, Councilor Gibson asked some of the questions I was going to ask, but I just wanted to ask Mr. Perry, so are you willing to go to negotiations? Can we set something up today so that we can start the negotiation process?
I will work till 12 o'clock every night this week. If that's what it takes to sit down and to negotiate a contract, you know, and I don't say that, you know, off the cuff, that's literally what I'll do. But when you look at the last couple of months and we've set four negotiating sessions and they haven't been for three of them, you know, the ball's not necessarily in our court. We'll continue to set those. I asked Mr. Yurmel to please document so that you folks on council know when these negotiation sessions are set up and what the position of the union is as it regards their attendance. I think that's the best thing I can do, to take you a record, factually.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Councilor Pena, go ahead.
Okay, so, okay, so you're willing to do the negotiations? So I think what we can do is just get a commitment from ASME to see if we can get a meeting scheduled and then if we could report back at the January 6th meeting and find out, you know, what the status is? Because, you know, I know these guys haven't had a raise in four years and, you know, they're really hard workers and just like everyone else in the city.
Absolutely.
So, and I know you agree with that, so, you know, I know from solid waste, you know, they pick up 15 tons of trash a day, they go, they pick up from 17,000 residential homes every week and they work 362 days a year, so I think they really deserve to be at the top.
They do a great job. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Pena. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Councilor Pena.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, I suppose you'd be the one to respond to this. We know that impasse is not a good thing because no one gets the opportunity to really champion what they're trying to do, neither the administration nor the later in this case. So I would assume that you agree that impasse is not a good thing.
I would prefer to get a negotiated disposition, 100% agree with that.
And so the next, I guess, place I would go to is why not have binding arbitration? That would get us to what I would consider a non-impasse situation because we would know at that point.
Sure. What's interesting about that is that, I mean, there's a lot of different ways to look at it through the prism of labor management relations, but what's interesting about it is that what's really provided for under PIBA, the Public Employee Bargaining Act, is that an arbitrator cannot award more than what was appropriated anyway. And so when you say, why not go to bargaining arbitration, it's total package arbitration. So they could say, well, we'll give the award of the appropriation, but the city doesn't get anything in return. That's one specific reason why you wouldn't want to implement arbitration. You'd want to bring the parties back and continue to try to get them to resolve their impasse. But under PIBA, I mean, I think you make a decent argument from the perspective of the binding arbitration being, you know, limited to the appropriation anyway.
Absolutely. And I think no one's asking for any more than that, that I know of. And it seems like, as Councilor Pena is saying, that we need to have some sort of informed discussion, or at least informed discussion that's happened around the issue, so that when it comes back to us, I don't know if this is on or off anyway at that moment, I'll just speak loud. So that we all know where we stand. And I think binding arbitration, I don't want to say forces this, but it certainly strikes us, all of us, to make sure that we're putting the best practice forward and that it's for the greater good. Employees, I don't think, are asking for any more than what you correctly identified as what has been appropriated. But to hold that appropriation back, saying, we're not going to release that appropriation until there's some magic agreement, is wrong. I mean, I think that's not what this body thought of when they made the appropriation. They thought, let's make sure that the employees are considered and are treated in a way that's how we all want to be treated and not be subject to some kind of, I don't know what to call it, other than, it sounds like, well, it's not even a negotiation. It sounds like it's a one-sided, you either give up something for us to give you the appropriation that's been made, and that's not exactly, I don't think, what I had in mind when that appropriation was made.
And I appreciate what you're saying. I couldn't agree with you more, to the extent of the benefit of the few shouldn't overshadow the benefit of others. So if we proceed with the premise that we're limited to the appropriation being 1% in this particular example, what we have is a situation where the individuals, by virtue of contract, there are union senior executives that don't have to go out on the routes and pick up the trash every day. They get to do union business, but they, in this case, they have not submitted it to the membership for a vote. And I would respectfully submit that if it was provided to the membership for the vote, then the benefit of the masses would probably overshadow, hence it would be a negotiated disposition with both sides providing a concession.
And I agree with a lot of what you just said, except for the fact that we are holding something over the employees that they have nothing to do with. They're just saying, we require that we be considered and be respected for the work we do and we know that there's money there, let's distribute that money. Now, it's true that the administration doesn't go out and pick up trash or whatever else, so that's not a fair discussion, that the union leadership is not picking up trash when they're negotiating. They're doing a job, just like you folks are, but that should not be the determining factor as to whether or not employees get their deserved amount.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate what you're saying there. And hence, that is why we kind of got to come up with an alternative with the M Series. And what we basically said to the M Series is, take your accumulated leave. Every employee on an annualized basis contribute three to four hours a year that towards a pool and unit, union management can do their union activities, basically at the cost of the membership being three, four hours a year opposed to the taxpayers. I mean, I think there's a fairly colorable argument there about who should be paying for union activities. That's the only point I'm making. It's unfortunate that, quite honestly, I think it's the sticking point of this whole thing. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
I was just going to add that I think Mr. Perry said that he was willing to go back to the table. And when you talk about binding arbitration, I think that's something that's discussed while they're doing the negotiations. So I know that the M Series has implemented something, so maybe it would be good to bring them to the table as well to see if it works or not.
And I very much appreciate that, Madam President. And Councilor Pena, I think maybe bringing in the union president from M Series, the local, to talk about that, maybe at the next discussion with council, may be a good point as well, to see whether it's had a delirious impact on them. Thanks so much. I think it was a very good discussion. I appreciate your opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Don Schrader, Tracy Daniel and Elaine Duran.
As I understand it, the justification for this $33,000 per year raise is to bring his pay closer to what it would be in other comparable cities. With that in mind, I decided to do a little research. I started by searching the cities with populations close to but lower than Albuquerque. I then went to those cities' webpages and looked at job listings for police dispatchers and their hourly salaries. And I have a sample of three of those cities. First, Long Beach, California, a starting pay at $2.13 higher than what I make and topping out at $17.20 higher. Second was Mesa, Arizona, with pay between $2.81 to $2.45 per hour higher. Third, Colorado Springs, excuse me, pays between $2.31 and $7.70 higher. Now, I can just imagine the response I'd get if I tried asking for a raise by sending these members up my chain of command all the way to the mayor. If he were in a gracious mood, he would probably wish me good luck in my new city. And that is precisely what the City of Albuquerque should have said to Perry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Elaine Duran, Janet Sears, Scott Hale.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the council. I come to you here this evening. We, the citizens and the taxpayers, respectfully come here tonight in support of APD and all city workers. As a whole, these fine people took cuts and have had no raises since the recession. And who are APD, who are in fact in the line of fire protecting, serving and enforcing the law, are in fact short-staffed. We, the people, believe with a pay increase, it would show our officers, we do support them, and believe me, it is far overdue. We want to believe the administration's elected officials will support their law enforcement and the very city employees that maintain this fine city. Regarding APD, by doing so, would make a positive impact on the following ongoing issues. Recruitment would now be attractive. Morale, something that has been unbelievably low for so long, it would prove support from the administration and as well as of this fine council. Something APD as a whole do so deserve. As far as our city employees, with what they make is truly an insult. How many of these hard-working city employees, families, do without even the bare essentials to support their families? Please take them into consideration. Common sense tells me, in our city, if our city employees make more money, they spend the money right here in the city.
Thank you, Ms. Duran. Janet Sears, Scott Hale, Richard Shine and Roger Mickelson.
Madam Vice President, City Councilors, my name is Richard Shine. I'm currently Commissioner on the Police Oversight Commission. I appear before you tonight to respond to some questions raised at your public meeting on November 18th. on November 18th about my activities related to the POC Task Force and my legislative proposals that were submitted to that task force. Regarding the concern that I might have engaged in an Open Meetings Act violation in my dealings with task force members, I spoke about the matter with Ms. Mona Vincente. She is an Assistant New Mexico Attorney General, who has drafted several Attorney General opinions interpreting the Open Meetings Act. The New Mexico Attorney General is assigned by the Open Meetings Act with the responsibility for enforcing that act. She confirms that what I have been doing with the task force is not a violation of the Open Meetings Act. I, like any other citizen at a town hall meeting or otherwise, have a right to submit legislative proposals to the task force chair and ask him to distribute the proposals, which he did, to other task force members. I, like the union president or any other citizen, have a First Amendment right to meet privately with individual members of the task force to discuss my legislative proposals. Even if I met privately with every member of the task force, it would not be an Open Meetings Act violation, because I am not a member of the task force. An Open Meetings Act violation could occur if a rolling quorum of the task force members discuss my proposals or those of anyone else's in private, but I have no reason to believe that such a violation has occurred. These legislative proposals are based upon my experience over the 14 months, uh, last 14 months as a commissioner of the POC. However, I've made clear to the task force that these are my personal recommendations only, and I speak only for myself and no one else. I have a First Amendment right to attend any public task force meetings, just as the IRO, its hammer, or a representative attends each of those meetings along with other interested members of the public. I, like anyone else who is present, have a right to share my experience on the POC and my views with the task force whenever I'm recognized to speak by the chair. If I can just finish this, uh, in response to the...
How long do you have, Mr. Shine?
Another paragraph.
Thank you.
Uh, this task force should not be required to reach its conclusions in complete ignorance of the practical ways in which, uh, the current IRO, the current commission operate under the current ordinance. As part of my continuing effort to provide free and voluntary public service to the citizens of Albuquerque, I have submitted to the task force a complex set of legislative proposals that are designed to strike a careful balance between the need for effective civilian oversight of the police department and the protection of the rights of each police officer and every other citizen of Albuquerque. There has been no unethical conduct on my part. I am, I continue to hope that legislative proposals...
Mr. Shine, Mr. Shine, thank you. That was a very long paragraph. Thank you, Mr. Shine.
My last sentence.
Mr. Shine, thank you. We, we've been a little indulgent there. Roger Mickelson, Joseph Torres, Tagan Nminski.
President, distinguished council, happy holidays. After reading and hearing the excellent presentation by Ms. Jewel Hall and the Concerned Citizens of Albuquerque, I gleaned three key elements that are essential in the selection of the next APD Chief of Police. I sorted them as an acronym, A-P-D. A, aware, as the leader of any organization should be, the chief should be aware of the one that he or she leads, as well as aware of those he or she has called to sworn, called and sworn to serve. Being aware of the constitutional rights, civil rights, and civil liberties of all citizens of Albuquerque will allow our next chief to lead honorably, with wisdom and prudence. B, proactive. We need a chief who will be intentionally proactive in his or her approach to complex situations, not merely reactive. We need a problem solver. A reoccurring theme I hear from my fellow citizens is the need for the next chief to tackle the systemic issues of excessive police force, the apparent disregard of the APD Code of Ethics by certain officers, and the need to have a moral compass to guide the chief in the day-to-day responsibilities of such an important leadership position within our community. D, dedicated. Being a chief, the very term implies being a servant leader. It has to be more than simply a high-paying city job. It must be a calling. Being dedicated to lead by example, dedicated to their fellow police officers, dedicated to protect and serve the people of Albuquerque, and dedicated to respect the Constitution, specifically the Fourth Amendment. I remember, I remember hearing one city councilor accurately describe a local police force as a quasi-military unit. With the national trend of militarizing police departments, we must be, we must have an APD chief who will be aware, proactive, and dedicated to enforce the rule of law with the hand of wisdom and compassion. I pray that each of you would have great discernment as you navigate through this process to thoroughly examine the mayor's selection with a clear lens of honesty and truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Tagan Nminski, Joe Sabatini, Susan Lester.
My name is Tagan Nminski, and, uh, first I have comments in reference of, uh, Mr. Benton, uh, appointment.
Mr. Nminski.
And approved.
Mr. Nminski. Staff does not, we don't, the audience does not get to question the staff, so go ahead and make your points. We're more than, welcome to, we're more than interested in listening to you, but you cannot question staff.
Okay, here is issue. Not only 20, we don't pay, 300, 300, 10, multiply by 10, what is 33 million additional?
Thank you, Mr.
And that's not eight.
Thank you, Mr. Nminski. Joe Sabatini, Susan Lester, Rocky Gutierrez is our last speaker.
Madam Vice President, Commissioner, Counselors, uh, I'm Joe Sabatini. I live at 3514 Sixth Street Northwest. I'm here to speak on two ordinances that are later in the program, but I'm obliged to be elsewhere, so I...
It's that, there's a procedure now in effect to eliminate this problem.